Any agenda changes or revisions? Oh, wait, sorry. Please call a roll.
Okay. All right. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Nathan Long.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
And Bruce Robinson.
Here.
Now, are there any agenda changes or revisions?
Yes, there are. Item 7.1, Planning Commission Rules and Procedures, will not be happening tonight. The city attorney hasn't had a chance to get to it yet, so that will be at our next meeting.
Okay. Darn. Let's see, the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
I move a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are accepted. Public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing. There's no public. Final orders, resolutions, and written communications, none are scheduled. Public hearings, none are scheduled. Old business has been canceled. Right? New business?
Or postponed.
Postponed. Thank you. New business, Planning Commission training.
We have three fairly, actually very significant, planning efforts starting this year. Revising the comprehensive plan is one. We haven't updated the comprehensive plan in a comprehensive way. Actually, the comprehensive plan was adopted in 1984, and it's been tweaked since then. There were some changes in 2001, I think it was, relative to a few of the goals. But we really haven't taken a hard look at the whole thing, and we want to start doing that. In addition, the Parks Master Plan was adopted in 2001, and it's ripe for updating, and we're going to be starting that this year. And we've gotten a grant for a project for planning for the area of the Nelskot Gap, and the bounds of that are what, 19th to...
It's a little bit north of 23rd.
Okay.
To the south end of the Nelskot Strip.
Okay. So down to 35th. So what we want to do is, tonight, the first thing is show some videos that the Department of Land Conservation and Development has prepared on comprehensive planning. They're not that long, but it gives really good background on how planning is supposed to be done in Oregon. And then we can go into a couple of the, into the Parks Master Plan and the plan for the Nelskot Gap area, just a little bit of overview on that to start familiarizing you with that. These are going to be, all three of these together will be, it'll be a fairly long process for each of them, and a very involved process, certainly for the comprehensive plan, it'll be extremely involved, and probably a two-year process, at least. So just want to sort of get the ball rolling, start getting familiarized with some of the important aspects of that. So I'm going to turn on some videos for you, and sit back and enjoy.
Steve, you might want to move out somewhere where you can see the screen better.
Chapter 1. Planning Program. The purpose of land use planning is to manage land uses and activities efficiently to meet our needs today, serving resources for future generations. Planning takes water, soil, fish and wildlife, vegetation, riparian, forest, agriculture, estuarine, and other natural systems from adverse effects of unregulated development. Planning promotes development that enhances livability through man-made systems such as industrial and commercial development, streets, and other needed public facilities and services. Effective land use planning carefully balances conservation and development to meet state, regional, and community objectives. Well-planned areas are more cost-efficient to serve with water, sewer, and roads. In Oregon, this is accomplished by coordinated local government comprehensive plans and implementing measures that reflect state policies while meeting local needs and conditions. History. Oregon's planning system dates back to the legislature's adoption of Senate Bill 100, 1973. For arching goals were created in consultation with more than 10,000 citizens of the state and are updated over time. The system relies upon a partnership between state and local governments to promote coordinated and consistent administration of land uses based on local comprehensive plans adopted throughout the state. The law is administered by the Land Conservation and Development Commission, or LCDC, a citizen's body appointed by the governor to oversee state policy, goals, and guidelines. The Department of Land Conservation and Development, or DLCD, is the state agency that provides administrative oversight and technical assistance. Subsequent legislation created a process for appeal of local land use decisions to a new state agency called LUPA, the Land Use Board of Appeals. Statewide land use planning goals. Oregon's primary land use policies are expressed in 19 statewide planning goals. The goals may be clustered into four groups. Goals 1 and 2 are the process goals of comprehensive planning. Goal 1 pertains to citizen involvement, and Goal 2 to comprehensive planning. Goals 3 through 8, 13 and 15, express natural resource conservation goals. Goals 9 through 12 and 14 are concerned with housing, transportation, urban growth, and economic development. The remaining goals, 16 through 19, apply specifically to the unique resources of the Oregon coast. Laws and Policies. Laws enacted by the Oregon Legislature are codified in Oregon Revised Statutes, or ORS, and create the legal framework and requirements for the statewide planning program. The primary statutes are: Chapter 197, Comprehensive Planning and Coordination; Chapter 215, County Planning and Zoning; Chapter 227, City Planning and Zoning; Chapter 195, Local Government Planning Coordination; Chapter 196, Wetlands, Rivers, Ocean Planning, and the Columbia River Gorge; Chapter 92, Land Divisions; Chapter 222, Annex Agents. ORS 197 directs LCDC to adopt statewide land use planning goals to guide local governments and state agencies, and also to adopt administrative rules to augment or provide more specific direction for meeting these goals and statutes. State Role. LCDC is the state policy body charged with reviewing each local comprehensive plan and implementing land use regulations to comply with the goals. The technical term that describes state approval is "acknowledgement." When acknowledged, the plan becomes the guiding document for all land use decisions in that jurisdiction. When changes or amendments to local plans and land use regulations are proposed, LCDC and DLCD review the proposed changes for compliance with state requirements. Generally, larger cities, in coordination with counties, are required to review and update their plans in a process called periodic review. DLCD gives local governments technical and financial assistance to help them update and implement their plans. In compliance with statewide goals, cities and counties adopt their comprehensive plans and implement them through ordinances and other local measures. They review and update their plans and implementing ordinances as needed to meet changing needs and circumstances or to comply with new requirements. Any development, whether a new single-family home or a shopping center, must receive prior approval from the local jurisdiction to ensure that it conforms to the land use plan and ordinances for health and safety and other local objectives. Typical land use decisions include variances, site and design review, conditional use permits, partitions, subdivisions, and zone changes. Certain kinds of development, such as an addition to a home, may be approved quickly at the staff level, while others, such as a home-based business or small office complex in a residential zone, may require conditional use approval by the Planning Commission. More complicated actions or policy changes, such as a new mixed-use zone or zone change from multifamily residential to retail commercial, may require approval of the city council or county board. A more complete discussion of city and county processes are found in the following chapters. Appeals. Under Oregon law, individuals or organizations must have standing to appeal a land use decision. This means that they must have participated in the local hearings and raised specific issues concerning the proposed action. There are a number of ways to appeal a land use decision. Most are settled at the staff or Planning Commission level, while others are heard by the elected city council or county commission or hearings officer. Others are decided by the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. Local staff are good resources for clarification on specific procedures. Coordination. Governmental agencies are required to consult and coordinate with one another before making land use decisions that may affect another jurisdiction. An example is when the decision involves unincorporated areas within a city's urban growth boundary. In addition, by coordinating their plans, state, local, and federal agencies can help leverage scarce funds and assure the public that spending on roads, water, sewer, and other facilities is efficient and effective. Citizen Involvement. Citizen involvement is the first of Oregon's statewide planning goals and a hallmark of our planning program. Goal 1 calls for widespread citizen involvement and effective two-way communication with citizens. At every level of government, citizens must be kept informed of land use activities and given opportunities to be involved. Each city and county plan must include a citizen involvement program that describes how the public can participate in each phase of its planning process, including rules for public notice and comments. Some jurisdictions use neighborhood or area advisory committees to review and make recommendations on major land use proposals. What is a comprehensive plan? A comprehensive plan is a generalized coordinated land use map and policy statement of the governing body of a city or county. It relates to all man-made and natural systems as well as activities relating to the use of lands. It establishes the community's vision and identifies the type, location, and intensity of future development. It must address local conditions and priorities consistent with the applicable requirements of the statewide planning goals. The plan is implemented through ordinances, codes, or regulations. It has the force of law and is the guiding land use document for each local jurisdiction. Factual base. Statewide planning goals require specific data and analysis to support the policies and land use designations. Thus, accurate, up-to-date information is a key component of each comprehensive plan. Required information includes facts about current and expected population growth, buildable lands, current land uses and development trends, as well as inventories of local natural resources and geologic and hydrologic conditions that may affect planning decisions. Goals, policies, and maps. Local plans are guided by goals and policies that reflect the unique circumstances and vision of each community, respond to current needs and conditions, and provide guidance for implementing and amending the plan, funding, and other matters. Each plan also includes a comprehensive plan map that shows the applicable land use designations, such as residential, employment, and resource lands. Comprehensive plans also contain other supporting maps showing the urban growth boundary and existing and proposed land uses, transportation facilities, and public facilities and services. They also cover flood areas, geologic hazard areas, agricultural and forest lands, natural resources, historic resources, and recreational facilities. Implementation. Implementing measures are the ordinances, budgets, and capital improvement programs, and specific standards and criteria that guide local jurisdictions in carrying out their comprehensive plans. These include zoning and land division ordinances and other land use regulations. For example, zoning ordinances specify the uses and activities allowed in various areas in a community. In urban areas, they typically emphasize topics such as housing, economic development, and livability. In rural areas, zoning provisions typically emphasize farm and forest uses, rural residential development, and natural resource protection. Functional Plans. Functional plans usually include site-specific details. A Parks Master Plan may provide design for recreational facilities. A downtown redevelopment or Main Street Plan may include streetscape design, off-street parking, street trees and other amenities, pedestrian and bicycle circulation, lighting, and mixed uses. Other examples of functional plans include capital improvement programs, transportation systems plans, and public facilities plans such as for sewer or water. Sub-Area Neighborhood Plans. The purpose of sub-area or neighborhood plans is to address specific needs identified by residents and businesses of a specific area. They protect and enhance livability at the neighborhood level within the framework of the comprehensive plan. These plans often include measures such as park improvements or better traffic circulation in the area. Emerging Issues. In addition to the topics typically covered in the comprehensive plans, a number of new issues are gaining attention. Among these are sustainability, climate change, and regional planning. Oregon's planning program and local land use plans provide a framework for communities to address these issues. Sustainability. Many local communities are considering sustainable development as a framework to meet the physical, social, and economic needs of the present as well as future generations. Sustainability involves management practices that emphasize mixed-use development patterns, enhanced transportation linkages, protection of natural amenities, and a sense of community. Many jurisdictions are integrating the concept of sustainability into their comprehensive plans and land use regulations. Many plans have these core elements in place already. Climate Change. Scientific evidence confirms that the Earth's climate is being affected by greenhouse gas emissions from cars, trucks, power plants, and other human activities. The effects of climate change could have serious implications for the people, environment, and economy of Oregon. The state has assessed these potential impacts and identified a range of actions to help prepare for, adapt to, and mitigate the effects of too much carbon in the atmosphere. Local governments are beginning to address this issue. Resources for addressing climate change through local initiatives may be found at www.orclimatechange.gov. Regional Planning. Many land use and natural resource issues affect areas beyond local government boundaries. Groundwater supplies, watershed restoration, economic development, and transportation systems are examples. Regional planning can help address these and other matters through cooperation and coordination among neighboring jurisdictions and state agencies. The state has several programs to help local jurisdictions meet regional planning needs, including intergovernmental teams and other regional problem-solving approaches. Establishing urban growth boundaries and coordinating the delivery of public facilities and services inside that urban growth area is an important element of regional planning. Specific regional programs in Oregon include the Portland Metro Regional Plan and Urban Growth Boundary, Estuary Planning through the Oregon Coastal Management Program, and Planning Coordination in the Columbia River Gorge National Scenic Area.
Welcome to Chapter 2, Urban, Rural, and Resource Planning. The Oregon Planning Program relies on cities and counties to prepare and implement their local comprehensive plans and land use regulations. Oregon's planning law requires local plans and regulations to be consistent with state law and the statewide planning goals, including applicable rules adopted by the Land Conservation and Development Commission, or LCDC. Urban Planning. Cities have the primary responsibility to plan for and manage urban-scale development and provide appropriate services for areas within their urban growth boundaries, or UGBs. This concept is covered in more detail later in this chapter. Cities and counties jointly manage unincorporated areas within urban growth boundaries and urban reserve areas that may eventually be added to an urban growth boundary. Land Supply. Cities and counties must maintain a 20-year supply of land within an urban growth boundary to meet projected needs. This includes vacant and redevelopable land with topography and infrastructure to support residential, commercial, and industrial uses. Goal 10, the state's housing goal and administrative rules, provides specific guidance for preparing a housing needs analysis and buildable lands inventory. Goal 9, the economic development goal, provides help for preparing an economic opportunities analysis to ensure an adequate supply of suitable sites for growth. Goal 9, Economic Development. This statewide goal requires cities to maintain an adequate supply of suitable sites that meet their community's economic development needs, policies, and objectives. This includes an adequate supply of sites of suitable sizes, types, locations, and service levels for a variety of industrial and commercial uses. Local plans must include an economic opportunities analysis of factors related to local, state, and national trends and policies that support current and projected economic development for the next 20 years. Goal 10, Housing. This goal requires cities to assure adequate opportunities for a variety of housing types, locations, and densities that meet the community's housing needs. These are based on coordinated population projections and other factors related to local housing and employment trends. Land use regulations governing review and approval of needed housing must be clear and objective, and may not be used to deny an application or reduce density. LCDC administrative rules provide guidance on how to conduct a buildable lands inventory. Within the Portland metropolitan region, housing rules specify requirements for each jurisdiction based on its size and contribution to meeting regional housing needs. Goal 11, Public Facilities and Services. This goal requires cities and counties to plan for and develop timely, orderly, and efficient sewer, water, transportation, and other infrastructure that support existing and proposed land uses. Planning for these services is a principal means by which a city can affect the location, scale, and pace of development. Other public services and facilities, such as law enforcement and fire protection, also should be considered. Transportation planning is explained in more detail in the Urban Growth section. Each local government with more than 2,500 people must adopt a public facilities plan for water, sewer, and transportation facilities. These plans include an inventory of existing and needed future facilities, an estimate of the general timing, costs, and potential funding sources. In Oregon, counties are required to coordinate planning of all jurisdictions within their boundaries and undertake primary planning responsibility for areas outside cities. They are responsible for protecting natural resources and economic resource lands and providing a framework for rural residential, commercial, and industrial development. All this must be consistent with the statewide planning goals. Counties typically protect agriculture and forest land for uses that are compatible with a resource-based economy. County plans may allow limited rural development in unincorporated communities and on resource lands using planning processes set out in state administrative rules. Planning for rural development on farm and forest lands often requires an exception to the statewide planning goals. Goal 3, Agricultural Lands, and Goal 4, Forest Lands. As we just noted, counties are required to plan to conserve natural resources while supporting local and state agricultural and forest economies. Plan policies and land use designations protect farm and forest land. Exclusive farm use and forest zoning regulations limit uses on agricultural and forest lands based on LCDC rules. These zones also include minimum lot sizes to preserve land in blocks large enough to maintain commercial-scale farming and forestry. Goal 5, Natural Resources. Goal 5 applies to cities and counties and is designed to protect and conserve a wide range of natural resources, including riparian areas, wetlands, fish and wildlife habitat, wild and scenic rivers, wilderness areas, mineral and aggregate resources, energy sources, groundwater, natural areas, historic and cultural resources, scenic views and sights, and open space. Local governments are required to follow a specific planning process for resource protection. They must inventory resources and determine their significance, identify conflicting uses, evaluate the economic, social, environmental, and energy consequences of allowing conflicting uses, and develop programs that protect each resource. LCDC administrative rules provide detailed guidance for each of the Goal 5 resource categories. The rules describe specific safe harbor resource protection programs a local government can choose to meet goal requirements without challenge. Unincorporated Communities. The state has a process for identifying exception areas and to enable counties to plan and manage land use in unincorporated communities with residential, commercial, and industrial development that may be situated in or near resource areas. The process allows such uses to continue and, in some cases, expand. Counties are required to identify and designate these rural centers, plan for permitted and prohibited uses, and anticipate current and future facilities' needs. These designations allow for different intensities of development. A rural community is primarily residential. A rural service center provides goods and services to the surrounding rural area. An urban unincorporated community includes a mixture of residential and employment uses and is served by a community water and sewer system. Destination Resort Planning. A destination resort is a self-contained development that provides for visitor-oriented accommodations and developed recreational facilities in a setting with high natural amenities. In accordance with state law, counties may allow destination resorts on certain rural lands to help create or strengthen the local tourism economy. To retain natural features and minimize adverse environmental impacts, including any effects on farming operations, the resort must be compatible with site and adjacent land uses. Destination resort planning is complex and may be controversial. It is a substantial planning effort that may take considerable time and staff resources Urban Growth. Goal 14, Urbanization. This goal requires cities to project future growth and identify areas that may accommodate this growth in an orderly and efficient manner. This goal requires cities to project This goal requires cities to project future growth and identify areas that may accommodate this growth in an orderly and efficient manner. Those areas slated for urban growth are identified after assessments of public facilities and services, environmental, energy, economic, and social consequences, and the compatibility of urban uses with nearby agricultural and forest activities. They are then included within the UGB, a key feature of Oregon's land-use planning system. Urban Growth Boundaries. This goal calls for each city and the surrounding county to establish a UGB. UGBs separate urbanizable land from rural land, identifying the extent of urban growth planned for the next 20 years. Urbanizable land is the area within the UGB outside developed areas suitable and available for future planned urban development and services. Annexation to a city is typically expected, but not always required as services are extended and development occurs. Cities are required to estimate their needs for a 20-year supply of land to accommodate housing, employment, and other urban uses. Public facilities, streets and roads, schools, parks, and open space must also be included in this 20-year estimate. Forecasts estimate the future population of a given area based on historic growth and assumptions about future trends. All counties in Oregon must coordinate with their cities to develop, adopt, and maintain population forecasts for land use planning, including determining the size of UGBs. Within the Portland Metropolitan Region, the Metropolitan Service District, or METRO, is responsible for planning coordination and establishing the region's UGB. If the 20-year land supply within a UGB is considered insufficient, cities are required to amend their comprehensive plans by any or all of the following: planning for more redevelopment, planning for more infill development, increasing residential densities, expanding the UGB. Expanding an urban-growth boundary. State rules set priorities for the types of land that can be added to a UGB. The first priority is land designated as urban reserves, areas that the city and county agree could be future urban areas. This is followed by the exception areas we just talked about, and marginal lands. Marginal lands apply only to Washington and Lane Counties. If none of these areas are adequate to meet the projected 20-year land need, less productive farm or forest lands may be considered. Highly productive farm and forest lands are the last priority. Other matters to consider when contemplating a UGB expansion include the availability of urban services, the most efficient use for the land, and constraints such as wetlands and steep slopes. Urban Growth Management. The quality of life in cities depends in part on how urbanizable lands are managed so they remain suitable for eventual urban development. The key document for coordinating these efforts is the Urban Growth Management Agreement, signed by each county and city. Linking Transportation and Land Use. Goal 12, Transportation. This goal guides transportation planning in the state. It requires many communities to adopt a transportation system plan, or TSP, and coordinate land use decisions and local transportation planning with the Oregon Department of Transportation, or ODOT. The goal of a TSP is to plan for a safe, convenient, and economical network of transportation facilities for a broad range of types of travel. The TSP is a major tool for guiding the location, timing, and scale of development in existing and newly urbanizing areas. Transportation facilities have far-reaching effects on the economy, land use patterns, air quality, and quality of life. The most effective regional transportation systems include a mixture of transportation modes, including automobile, truck, air, rail, mass transit, boat, pedestrian, and bicycle. The transportation planning rule implements Goal 12 by integrating decisions about land use and transportation. Local governments must ensure that their comprehensive plans and land use regulations are consistent with and support their TSPs. They also must take appropriate action to resolve any transportation impacts of new Natural Hazard Planning. Goal 7, Natural Hazards. The purpose of this goal is to protect people and property from natural disasters and hazards such as floods, landslides, earthquakes, tsunamis, coastal erosion, and wildfires. There is some overlap between the provisions of Goal 7 and the hazard provisions of Goal 17, coastal shorelands, and Goal 18, beaches and dunes. While all these goals have a shared purpose of limiting or prohibiting certain developments in hazard areas, development in coastal shorelands or beach and dune areas must be consistent with their more specific requirements. Inventories. As components of their comprehensive plans, local governments are required to include inventories, policies, and implementing measures to reduce risks to people and property due to natural hazards and disasters. The following are three options for developing a natural hazards inventory: Community-wide hazard identification, community-wide vulnerability assessment, and risk analysis. A community-wide hazard identification is included in most comprehensive plans. A hazard map is created after estimating the extent of the hazard, intensity, and probability of occurrence. They provide a general outline of areas where a more thorough review of any proposed development should occur. Overlay zones indicate where specific development review standards are needed. A community-wide vulnerability assessment combines the hazard identification information noted previously with an inventory of the existing or estimated property and population exposed to a hazard. Many local comprehensive plans do not contain a vulnerability assessment. A risk analysis estimates the damage, injuries, and costs likely to be experienced in a geographical area over a period of time. Although there are few examples at the present time, this level of hazard assessment is becoming more prevalent. In addition to these three levels of hazard assessments, communities should require a site evaluation report when considering approving new development in known or potential hazard areas. Most inventories conducted at community and/or regional scale lack details about specific properties. Flood Plane Management. The goal of flood plane management is to reduce losses to people and property from floods while protecting the natural resources and functions of flood planes. Development within the floodway is prohibited, while development within the flood plain generally is allowed. Flood plane management involves regulatory, construction, and public education measures to avoid and minimize potential risk to development from flood hazards. Local cities and counties can meet Goal 7 requirements for coastal and riverine flood hazards by adopting and implementing local flood plane regulations that meet National Flood Insurance Program, or NFIP, requirements. Coastal Hazards. Coastal areas are subject to unique hazards. Ocean waves, currents, tides, and storms cause chronic hazards along the ocean shore, such as velocity flooding, beach, dune, or bluff erosion, and landslides. Riverine flooding typically occurs within estuaries and in some low-lying shore areas near the mouths of rivers. Coastal cities and counties have developed comprehensive plan provisions and zoning ordinances to address these hazards consistent with the state coastal goals. In addition, catastrophic hazards such as earthquakes and tsunamis occur periodically. State laws place restrictions on the construction of certain types of facilities within tsunami inundation zones and require new buildings to withstand earthquakes. The State Department of Geology and Mineral Industries has produced inventory maps that show tsunami inundation and earthquake zones local communities can use to plan for these hazards. Emergency Preparedness. The State of Oregon Office of Emergency Management plans and prepares for prevention, mitigation, and management of emergencies or disasters that present a threat to the lives and property of citizens and visitors to the state. The agency is responsible for coordinating and facilitating emergency planning, preparedness, response, and recovery activities with state and local emergency services agencies and organizations. While not typically engaged in local land use planning or land use decisions, the Office of Emergency Management can be a valuable source of information for local governments on how land uses can affect emergency preparedness.
That's as far as I want to go tonight. These are online, and you certainly can go to the DLCE site and go through these. The reason, as I said, the reason I wanted to do these is to start people thinking about the comprehensive planning process. One thing this does is talks about really the minimum standards that the state sets for what has to be in a comprehensive plan. But I think it's important to go beyond that, to look at other things. What we're foreseeing is a fairly long sort of visioning goals and values process, reaching out to all kinds of people, everybody in the community we possibly can, to identify what people like about Lincoln City, what's good, why they're here, why they haven't left, if they've been here for a while, what it is that keeps them here, in other words, and things that we, basically, things that we want to keep. And there's also maybe things that we want to change and also plan for things beyond what the statewide planning goals call for, like for making sure that we have adequate healthcare facilities and that sort of thing. The plan we have in place right now does meet the, or at the time it was adopted, did meet the statewide planning goal and state requirements. I think that there are some areas, though, that need more emphasis than what's in the existing plan, in particular, the economy goal, really, I think, needs a really hard look. Housing, transportation, those are things that are very, very important. You heard a number of things that are required. There's a lot of background materials that are needed, a lot of these other plans that are required, transportation system plan, wastewater plan, water plan, and a buildable lands inventory. We did a buildable lands inventory using 2005 information in 2006, but that needs updating. Part of that is the economic opportunities analysis, which will also, I think, need updating. There also was mention of the Urban Growth Management Agreement, and we have drafted one. We don't have one with a county yet. We have drafted one. I expect that that's one of the things that will be accomplished this year, we'll be adopting the Urban Growth Management Agreement. So that is sort of in a nutshell what I wanted to cover tonight. As I said, I'm just trying to get the ball rolling and get you thinking about some of the issues that are going to be involved in this, where we need to go. And I can hand off to Deb unless she has some questions for me right now. She wants to, she'll go in a little bit into the Parks Master Planning and the Nell Scott Gap Plan that's going on.
Commissioners, questions for the planning director? Thank you very much, Richard.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to talk about two initiatives that we already have underway. And the first one I'm going to talk about is the Parks Master Plan Update. As Richard mentioned earlier, the Parks Master Plan was adopted in 2001, and it's been a really good plan. Steve was the chair of the park board, and so probably knows this already. But we have accomplished a lot of things since then, and it's time to freshen it up a little bit. The purpose is to provide a guide for decision-making for parks and recreation spaces in the city. And we, last spring, got, well, applied for Oregon Parks and Rec Department grant. We asked for $40,000 and promised to match $27,000 locally, both with cash and in-kind, being staff, staff time essentially, for a total of $67,000. We may try to augment that with some other monies as available. Because we are planning not only for our citizens here in Lincoln City, but also we need to plan parks and recreation for all the tourists that we attract. And that is a big attraction for tourists. Tourism is the economic base for Lincoln City, so it stands to reason that we need to make an investment in making sure that we are providing the kind of recreation that people need and want. I'm just flashed up a map of our project boundary, and basically that is our UGB. We have a lot of parks, well, and open spaces. We have a lot of open space because in the '90s, the citizens passed a bond measure that raised $3 million to purchase open spaces, primarily for the protection of the open spaces. Many of them are wetlands or other sensitive environmental areas and habitat for wildlife. But it also allows for passive recreation. So that is something that we want to explore more fully. We now have about 400 acres of open space land within the city limits. As far as parks, we have a number of parks, but we are a seven-mile-long city, and so we need parks that are well-distributed for the people within the community. Maybe you are aware that just last week, the city council approved an offer to the school district to purchase the old Taft Elementary Site, and the city council agreed to do that, and the school board agreed to accept our offer. So we now have a new site at the south end of town where we really do need park and recreation space, both for our residents, kids, adults, and our tourists. When I applied for money to do a park plan update, I listed 10, the top 10 reasons, and there are more reasons than that. But the first reason is that we've already made substantial progress on the 2001 plan. Since that time, we added 25,000 square feet to the recreation center. We also added two miles of the Head-to-Bay Trail, which we hope eventually will extend all the way from the north end of the city to Soletz Bay. And so now, you know, we need to take another look at what are our priorities for the future. Another reason is because we were 7,000 population in 2001, now we're 8,400, and that includes Rhodes End, so, you know, that's part of it. But that's not all of it. Another reason is because we annexed Rhodes End, and so we need to be considering that neighborhood as well when we're planning for parks and recreation. We need to consider the changing demographics of residents and tourists. We are an aging community. We have a lot of retirees who move here, and many of them are active and want, and are really seeking recreation. It brings new people to our community, and it also keeps people here and keeps our residents healthy. And as I mentioned, tourism, you know, is a trendy business, and so we want to make sure that we're offering all the kinds of things that people want to do, or at least a good share of them, because that's what will make people want, choose to come to Lincoln City and come back again and again. Another reason is because we acquired the villages of Cascade Head, and in that preliminary master plan, the preliminary master plan showed several parks and open spaces, and so we want to make sure we incorporate that into our Parks so we want to make sure we incorporate that into our Parks Master Plan and give some thought as to what we want to do with those spaces. I just mentioned the acquisition of the land for Taft Park. This is another reason why we want to refresh that plan, and we may be doing site planning for the Taft Park, getting a little bit ahead of the master plan, but we need to make sure that what we're offering in that park is our priorities for the neighborhood down there and also for the community. We need an updated capital improvements plan, and that is another kind of a functional plan that was mentioned in the video. The capital improvements plan lists basically those large items that we want to be able to afford and provide for the city in the coming years. We have program expenses, we have staff expenses, ongoing administrative expenses, but the capital improvements is a large capital investment, something costly that you don't expect to do year after year, you expect to do at once as kind of an investment for a long time. One thing that we noticed recently is that our capital improvements plan calls out a rather large budget for park development and acquisition that maybe is larger than needed now, because one example was, one of the priorities was the Taft Park acquisition. And back in 2008, the last time we looked at the capital improvements plan for parks, land prices were quite a bit higher than they are today. And so we were able to get the land for Taft Park at a relatively low cost, and we are considering uses that may not be as expensive as what was originally envisioned. So we want to make sure that what we have in our capital improvements plan is realistic and reflects those things that we intend to do. One of the reasons is that that's so important is because we base our system development charges for parks on the capital improvements plan. So if that's really out of whack, then we are probably asking too much of those people who are doing new development in the city. However, you know, we want to make sure that when we do have new development, it does pay its share of providing for new park and recreation areas. We need to implement our ADA transition plan. The city's been working very hard on identifying those areas in town that need improvement for accessibility, and so we have a lot of material on that now, a lot of feedback from the consultants that we hired to take a look at the city. We have a number of things in our parks and recreation areas that we should try to improve as we can. And so that will be part of our new Parks Master Plan. We have ever-increasing demands on our park maintenance staff, and our staff is actually not any bigger than it was, I don't know, a decade ago, and yet we've added a lot of additional land and responsibilities for them. So we try to find ways to minimize the maintenance requirements. That's one way of being sustainable. It's another message that we heard in the video. And number 10, we need a strategy for improving the Parks and Rec system. We received a bequest a couple of years ago. First of all, it started off with the donor had said, you know, what would the city do with $500,000, $600,000 if I left a bequest? And we do have this plan, but it was kind of a scramble for us to decide what our priorities would be if we all of a sudden had a gift like that. And so we came up with some alternatives, we provided it to the gentleman, and he ended up leaving us the bequest, but it was sort of earmarked for covered tennis, which was something that we hadn't really considered, and it still might not be a priority for us, but it's, just going through that exercise made us realize that it would be nice to have a plan that really laid out those priorities for today. And the gentleman did leave us the money, but in the will, it says it should be used for covered tennis courts if that's possible, if it's feasible. So we are looking at that for Taft Park, using that in Taft Park and maybe combining it with other uses, so it's not just a single-purpose facility. So anyway, those are the 10 reasons that I used why we should be given a planning grant, and in fact, we did get a planning grant. I submitted the application in May. In the fall, it was awarded. We will try to have a kickoff sometime in the spring, and we do need to have it completed by fall of 2016, which seems to be a ways away, but, you know, time goes rather quickly on these things, and it does take a while to get organized and to make sure we include all the components that we need to. Right now, the park board has one active member. There are names of volunteers, who are people who have volunteered to serve on the park board. The council needs to interview those people and do background checks before they can make appointments, so I'm hoping that some of that is forthcoming fairly soon. But I would encourage anyone who happens to be watching this at home to join us and submit an application to be on the park board. I think it'll be a very interesting year with this planning project. So that is basically what I have to tell you about park planning. Do you have any questions about that?
Commissioners?
On the covered tennis court, cover, pretty much what?
Well, right now, because we have finally acquired the Taft Park land, now the next step is I'm going to submit another grant request for a development grant and using the bequest as local match for that, or the price that we're paying for the land, both are eligible as match. We need to, as a community, decide what are priorities for that area. Right now, it has the only soccer field in town, other than the one at the high school that's used primarily for games. And so I'm sure that we'll have a lot of support for maintaining and improving that soccer field. It's not regulation size, and that's one of the things that we think that the community's going to want to do, is to improve that. If we use the bequest, and, you know, maybe this won't happen this year, but if we have talked about making a lot, tennis court is a large area, and covering it would give us a facility for possible events. It could be used for basketball and pickleball and some of these other games, as well as tennis. Real tennis players say, no, you really want a dedicated space for tennis, and you want to have a certain kind of a surface, and you'd really, you know, it'd be better if it were enclosed. But, you know, we have to look at it in terms of the needs we have and how this could meet the needs of several different groups. So that's something we'll be talking about in the months to come. And then we also, in the park, we want to, you know, have facilities, like if you have a facility like that, you want to have restroom facility, maybe concession stand, you know, but there are lots of different ideas. A ball diamond eventually would be a very nice thing. We have a group, a large group of people who would like to have dog park, and I know that that would appeal to the tourists in our dog-friendly community as well. So, you know, lots of competing interests there. We will definitely want to have public input, and we need a park board to kind of spearhead the project.
Have you looked at maybe, or does that bequest have to be for Taft Park, or can that be used to maybe cover the Dorchester tennis court? There's tennis courts by surf types that may be purchased and covered there.
That's certainly a possibility. We need to look at the Dorchester courts and see if that would be feasible. And, you know, that's something we haven't really decided for sure, but Taft is an excellent area for some sort of a covered facility like that. So, yeah, it's a good thought, and we'll be looking into that a little further. I think, you know, with the purchased land cost, we offered $350,000, and so, you know, that will get us, a match for the grant that I'm going to apply for, local match has to be 40%, so, you know, that would get us several hundred thousand dollars to work with, which is nice, but, you know, when you're planning those kinds of facilities, it doesn't go that far either. So, anyway, yeah, we've got some work to do, but it's exciting.
It is.
Yeah.
Deborah, you mentioned that our population has grown since 2001, from 7,000 to 8,400 now. Do we have any statistics on how our number of visitors we get each year has grown since 2001? Because that's putting as much pressure on our park facilities as our own growth and the population of our residents, if not more.
That's a good, very good point, and I don't know that we have great numbers on that. I have heard, since I've been here, you know, 20,000 to 30,000 tourists on a big weekend, maybe even more than that. But we don't really have very good numbers on that. It would be nice to be able to tell you that specifically. But I think we do know, just anecdotally, we know that the parks fill up in the, well, like this beautiful weekend we just had, or in the summertime. And so, and we don't have, we have one really great playground in Regatta Park. We have another playground over in Wicoma Park, maybe you're not all aware of that one. There is a very, there's a small playground in Cutler City. I'm not sure, Steve, are there any more than that? But they are few and far between. And when people come with their kids, you know, they can't spend the whole time at the beach, and sometimes they, we actually had a consultant in town, and we took him over to Regatta Park, and he had a couple of young kids, and he was just delighted to know that that park was there and that playground. So anyway, we have lots of different populations to please.
There's one in Taft, I believe, also, or Cutler City.
Cutler City I mentioned, yeah. And that may be it. So it'll be great, too. That's one thing that we definitely think we'll want to add in the Taft Park, too. All right? I'll move on, then. That was what we call a functional plan. Another functional plan is the transportation system plan, and we have been working on that for a couple of years now, and we are trying to get the draft plan ready for public, and we'd like to finish that up in the next few months, so that would be great. Now I'm going to talk to you about a sub-area plan. Some of you are familiar with this. I think, I'm not sure who was on the commission and who wasn't when we did a tour, maybe a year or two ago, of the area. So let me pull that up. I know that maybe our newest commissioners were not on it. Oops, slideshow, there we go. The Nell Scott Gap refinement plan is, I guess the motivation for this plan is that we have this new highway improvement, three-quarter mile improvement on the highway, basically between 23rd Street southwest, southeast, and about down to the, a little past the 32nd Street intersection. The project is adding a third lane to a two-lane roadway, and so that will allow people making left turns to move out of the travel lane. It will really ease the congestion problem that happens when everyone is backing up behind somebody who wants to make a left turn. Hopefully, it will facilitate getting onto the highway, too. The improvements include the new traffic-controlled intersection at 32nd Street. I'm sure you're all aware of this, everyone's had to go a little slow through the construction zone, but this is something that the city has wanted for a very long time, and we expect that it's going to stimulate new interest in the area and new development. So I applied to the Transportation and Growth Management Program for a grant to do some planning in the areas surrounding that highway improvement, and that really fit very well with their goal of, you know, trying to provide a land use and transportation plan. So we have the improvement for the highway. It's not only going to add the additional lane and the intersection improvements, but it will also add walking and biking facilities. So that will be huge. Now, here is the area that we've drawn around that highway improvement. This is 23rd Street right here, so it extends a little bit north of there, and then it extends all the way down to the south end of the Nell Scott Business Strip. It extends on the east side of the highway to include a lot of vacant land and underutilized This is a photograph showing the north end, looking at south towards the 23rd Street intersection. The 23rd Street is, oh, and it goes all the way to Nell Scott Strip. The 23rd Street is an area where we have a lot of industrial-type uses, and it's the only area in town where we really have a place for that and for new growth in that The area also includes, at least near the highway, some of the flattest large parcels that we have in the city, and that is what's needed for some of those larger retail and industrial uses. So it's kind of a unique area, and we have a number of properties. Okay, this is going out on 23rd Street. To the left, we have a sign, and it's showing residential land for sale. Before, I think, maybe any of you were on the commission, except maybe for Doug, we had an application for multifamily development, and there is a land use approval for development of a number of multifamily units. The owner is not a builder or, you know, or a developer himself, so he would, obviously has the land for sale. But he is also very interested in this project because he thinks that having a plan for the area is going to serve everyone. This is the site plan for possible sunset views, and you can see a number of multifamily buildings in the plan, plus recreation, a little recreation center. Here are some pictures of just some industrial on southeast 23rd. We have an impoundment lot out there, we have some car repair out there, we have FedEx warehouse out there, some excavation. Along Highway 101, we also have some underutilized property and a number of piece, proper parcels for sale, both on the east and the west side of the highway. So at any rate, made this application and suggested that what we would like to have is a plan for this area that shows how we could incorporate new residential, how we could include area for new industrial and commercial, and combine them all with off-highway street systems. street systems, so that it would be a walkable community, and it would not, all these new uses would not generate a whole lot of more congestion on the highway, that they could get to, they could move around within this neighborhood without going out on the highway every single time. Our concern was that with this nice highway frontage, new uses that come in, you know, would be inclined to plop themselves down on the highway frontage, and without planning for access for the lands up to the east. So, so, anyway, ODOT and the Department of Land Conservation and Development like the proposal, both of them are, it's sort of a shared organization, this, this Transportation and Growth Management. And so, they did decide to approve our grant request. I had requested $150,000, it's actually going to be probably more than that when we end up. We anticipate $164,700 for consultant fees, and then the city will have a $30,000 contribution, which will be, again, a lot of it will be staff time. The schedule is, I applied for this quite a while ago, and, but it just takes, seems to take a really long time to get all the paperwork ready, have everything, everything has to go both through ODOT and through the Department of Land Conservation and Development for approvals. Right now, it's under review by the Department of Justice, because it's a grant that's over $150,000, so that's standard procedure. So, anyway, I guess they, they got some indication that it's moving forward in the Department of Justice review, and they hope that we'll be able to get started in a couple of months. So, we'll want to have a kickoff to get people up to speed on what's happening, and get the new project advisory committee on board and familiar with the site, and get all the consultants familiar. The, and then in the summer, we're planning to have, as public input, Design Week. It's, sometimes it's called like a Shrett Week, where it's kind of a hands-on planning experience, and we will have our consultants, we have Cogan Owens and Cogan signed up, and they've been, done a lot of planning in the, in Oregon, and they are Portland-based. They have ties to the coast, so they've all, are familiar with Lincoln City. They have put together a team that includes Lawrence Kumar, who is the architect behind Olivia Beach Development, if you're all familiar with that, in Nell Scott, and, and he's also working on the Logan Park project. We have, they are including in their team DKS associates, who is the engineering, which is the engineering firm that helped us with our transportation system plan, still working on it with us, and recent associates, who did engineering for Olivia Beach. They are the engineers who you have heard present for the Logan Park, so they have had a lot of experience also, and are very familiar with our community. So, and they also are including someone who specializes in citizen involvement, and someone who can do market analysis, to figure out what, you know, what are the best uses, and how, for what uses do we need this land? So, anyway, you know, we've got a great team, and they will all be on board for this Design Week, and the public will be invited to come and talk with them, and work with them on developing alternatives, and then we'll, should have alternatives development following shortly. In the fall and next winter, we will be at the point where we will be looking at implementation measures, a regulating plan for this area, maybe a new zone, we'll have to figure out exactly what form that will take, and then, hopefully, we'll have it adopted by spring of 2016. So, this is really, the intention is to have this be on a fast track, so once we get going, we expect to get the momentum up and keep the momentum going until plan adoption, about a little over a year from now. When I submitted this grant, I got letters from all these different organizations, and I hope that we will have some of these folks step up to be on our project advisory committee. The Nell Scott Neighborhood Association, the Bay Area Merchants Association, Lincoln Land Trust, which is an affordable housing organization, the Chamber of Commerce, the Planning Commission, the Lincoln County Planning Department. We did do our coordination with the county, and we'll continue to do that. The Sustainability Committee, our project advisory committee for the transportation system plan, and we also had a resolution from the City Council. What did surprise me, and I'm, I'm very delighted, Kate, Kate has talked to a number of landowners in that area at the counter, when, you know, they come in for various reasons, and she tells them about the project, and they always have responded really enthusiastically. They, and I did not know, because I hadn't really heard from them, you know, until after we got the grant, but typically, when you have a plan like this, it really does add value to property, and it gives everyone some predictability about what their neighbors are going to be doing, what they can expect the city to do, and so, they're really looking forward to it, so I can't, I think it's going to be great to get started. So, that's, that's it, that's the Gap Project. Yes.
Couple of questions. The land currently is all owned privately?
It's all private.
It's all private?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mentioned early up that it's some of the only flat industrial zone land that we have in town.
Mm-hmm.
I guess, depending on how the development plan goes, are we going to try to force that to continue to be used at least somewhat that way, or if not, do we have a plan to get industrial land some other way?
Well, that kind of remains to be seen, and that'll be part of the project, to talk about what we need for area for each, you know, each type of land use, for commercial and industrial in particular. We had a discussion about large, big boxes, you know, and this, this is the size of area that, that could accommodate a big box, for instance.
Didn't we kill that, pretty much?
What?
I thought that got shut down.
Well, actually, actually, that particular proposal did get, get shut down at the council, but they did ask the staff to bring back, you know, give it some thought, and bring back, you know, some more information about large-scale development, retail development, so that they could consider whether or not they, they wanted to go that direction. I mean, they haven't really made any decision or, you know, commitment to do anything, but they kind of wanted to continue the conversation. So, you know, that's just one example. Any kind of large industry typically needs several acres, you know, maybe a public facility, probably nothing for the city, and I'm not sure what that would be, but for those kinds of uses that need to have, you know, a large campus, need parking space, you know, this, this is the sort of property that they, that they looked forward, or look at. And we do not have very many large, large lots in town, or large parcels that could be developed in that way. So, what we need to do is figure out how much industrial growth should we expect? Should we expect large retail development or public facilities? And then, and maybe we don't know what's going to come, but we can reserve a large site for one of those, and then, but more than that, we want to build a community around it. So, some of the land does get hilly, it's not appropriate for that scale of use, but it might be great for residential development. And it would be nice to develop a neighborhood where people could walk to work, for instance. So, that's a possibility. Yeah, other than that, I don't have any preconceived notions. I do have this vision of having a walkable community, where people can walk to work, where there would be some retail, so they could maybe walk to the store. Just south of this area, not in our planning area, but just to the south, we have Spiglass Ridge, and just down here, maybe I have a better map here. Yeah, here we go. Here's the high school, here's Taft Elementary, here's the community college. So, it would be nice to be able to get some, a neighborhood that could, where kids could walk to school, or maybe the teachers could walk to school, and without having to go out on the highway. So, that would be, you know, that's the sort of solutions I would like to see, see us find in, in doing this planning process. Also, you know, we have this new improvement at 32nd, which must be about right here, and so, you know, we want to consider now what would that do to the traffic pattern and to connectivity, where we haven't had a traffic-controlled intersection before. So, and that also, you know, is, is great in terms of, of getting people from the west side of the highway over to the schools and the community college.
Building a road along that east side, keeping some of the traffic off.
A north-south road. Mm-hmm. Well, that's, yeah, that's the sort of thing we'll be looking, looking to do.
What's immediately north of the area, and is there any possibility for connectivity there with whatever, By Mart area or that?
North of 23rd?
Yeah.
Okay. We do have vacant land up here, and we've got a couple scattered businesses. On the, on the west side, we have the big Agnes Creek open space, which might give us some opportunity for connectivity.
On the east side there, that land immediately north of the, of 23rd Street, not only is it not in the city limits, it's not in the urban growth boundary. So, there, if, if we want to be promoting connectivity in there, we have to, we will be having to address that issue. And it may well be during, of course, the comprehensive planning process, when we discover, we may discover that we don't have sufficient land that, for the industrial and residential development, so we may need to expand the urban growth boundary, and it may prove that that's a logical place to do that.
The, the big white area here, I should explain, is the, is outside the current city limits, and it is in the county, and the 23rd Street kind of goes right along the top of that. Richard was referring to this area to the north. This is the area that has the approval for the multi-family development, and I was thinking in terms of, of right along the highway is where we have maybe a couple.
And then where is By Mart and Tanger Outlet on that map?
They're further north.
They're further north.
Mm-hmm. They're, okay, let's see, this, if you look at this inset map, you can see the outline of the project area, and then, oh, yeah. Okay, well, so 12th Street would be right here, that's where Tanger is, and By Mart's just south of, of 12th. So, yeah, it's just a little bit out of the, actually, this, this multi-family development here connects, I can't remember the name of the street, but the Presbyterian Church is right here, and there's, I believe, a Head Start program here, too, so if that helps you get oriented. But anyway, yes, if this, when this develops, the site plan specifies connecting, so it would be nice to develop some connectivity. Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you. We're on reports and comments. Community Development Director, we're on reports and comments.
I have no report or comment today.
City Attorney. Planning Commissioners, do you have any other reports or comments? Public comments on non-agenda items not involving a public hearing.
Hi, my name's Sandy Gruber, and I'm here on behalf of the Lincoln City 50th Anniversary Celebration, and just because this goes out to the wider world, I thought I'd put it out. Tuesday, March 3rd, I believe you have a planning commission meeting that night, but during the day, all afternoon, leading right up to the planning commission meeting, we will be hosting a, a big cake party, actually. We'll have 50 feet of cake in the hallway, and we're inviting the public to join us during the day and come take, hopefully, a lot of that cake away. And the reason that we're holding the, the cake party that day is because it's the 50th Anniversary of the first city council meeting that was held for the city of Lincoln City. So, we invite all of you to attend, obviously, since you're coming through your planning commission, but invite all your friends, let people know that we are going to have cake here. The museum will be having a display of, a photographic display, a then and that, then and now. So, we'll see pictures of certain areas of town way back in 1965, and other ones from present day. So, as a member of the 50th Anniversary Celebration, I invite you all to take part, and invite everyone you know to come and take part, too.
Great, thank you very much. Any other public comment? No. Future agenda items and the next meeting?
Next meeting is March 3rd, and at this point, we have nothing on the agenda, so it's, it's possible we may cancel that. The next meeting would then be the 17th.
I guess we're adjourned.
Okay.